Hello everybody and welcome back to another episode of My Time at Portia. So much to do. I've been playing on my own personal save and let me just tell you, I'm pretty far in from where we are and there's a lot of gameplay, so we have so much to do. Now thankfully for me playing, I know some things to make our lives a little easier in this let's play, so. I'm just gonna take a quick sip of water because I just had a coffee and my mouth is already dry from speaking and let's just jump right back in, right? So there's a few things we do want to do. We want, um, we want to add a skill point. We only got, uh, we're not that bad. Um, we definitely, what is this? We also wanted these two though. Let's see. Let's do this because we are gonna be friending. Okay, so our house is looking pretty horrible. I'm also, ooh, I pressed E. Get back up girl, come on. We're gonna take this because we, it's not even cute. We don't even like it that much, so. Goodbye, goodbye. So there's a lot of stuff we gotta do, but we gotta make sure that we can go get our mission real quick too. Um, the DDs are gonna come up, so we need to make sure that we're prepared for that. We're gonna try to be well-prepared for a lot of things in the first place anyways. So, we'll see how that works. Um, I do not in fact know if we have any other missions. Okay, we gotta spar with the silver corpse, which we can do. There's something on my desk that just was making it real hard, okay. So... Oh, we gotta unlock some stuff. We actually don't have it half-bad in here. It's pretty organized right now. Seriously, not bad. Not bad at all, okay. So, let's see if we can make... We haven't made it ready, have we? No. Stone table and two chairs, which should be super easy except for that we don't have marble. So it's not gonna be super, super easy, but let's go get some marble. Um, let's see. We also have some nails to open up, which we will do. Okay, we only got one marble out of that. We're gonna need some more, so let's just come check this out. Uh... Okay, important announcement today. Wrapping for me up safety, we have opened a new bin, room for diving. Ooh, okay. Yes, I know that one. Which is good. I don't know, oh, Lua, whatever his name is. We do need to focus a lot on material gathering, which is gonna be kind of boring. But, it's fine, we need, we need something. Oh yeah, let's get this. And two stone stools. Okay, so that's one of our missions. And, oh, right here. Also, while we're here, let's see if we can get... We gotta start getting some bronze going. Okay, that's fine. That's good. We're gonna make a whole bunch of these things. These things, if we can make more of them, we can kind of go a lot faster. Like, a lot faster. And that's a bit of our main priority. I really don't remember what we did in our last episode, to be fair. Okay, that's one. Let's get another one. I don't even think we have our own yet, do we? Think we might have to smash more rocks for ourselves. Let's see, what else do we need? We need something else as well. Uh... Bronze pipe. Uh, we have one. Probably need more than one. Yeah, we need two, which is fine. We have so many little chests here. Okay, well, I think we can make another bronze pipe, which is quite good news actually. Up there. Switch it up. I'm not 100% sure. Uh, okay. Should be able to make another bronze pipe right over here. Screw the copper pipe. Please make me a bronze one. And we're gonna go with all three. All three of them. So let's, um, go smash some more marb, or smash some more rocks for some marble. Because we almost like really need it. We also need to kind of go look around the town. See if we can get anything. I'm hoping that we're able to get... Oh yeah, Mayor Gale. We need to befriend Mayor Gale. Mayor Gale's a little tricky to befriend, so, um, he actually likes these, wow. Yeah, so behind compared to my other save, but it's fine. We have nothing now, but we're gonna have tons later. It's fine. Let's go find Pinky, because we wanna love Pinky. Want Pinky to be in our family. Uh, she should be somewhere down here. She walks kind of slow. She's a little fat. Yeah, there she is. Oh yeah, we need to get like the advance running. That's one of the trait things we can do. Purr, purr. Okay, let's give her this emperor koi. Lemon, eh? Anything? Oh, too bad. Okay. Well, we can try fighting someone right now. We just have to last a minute. And Remington is kind of easy out of all them. You wanna fight one of them, I'd definitely fight him. Again, we just have to last a minute, so. But, yeah, we're definitely way too low. Like, if we did, yeah. I mean, we probably could get away with it, but gotta make sure we keep running. Like... If we just keep doing this, let's see. We might be able to beat him. I don't wanna get cocky about it though. Oh, look, Pinky's right there. That's so sweet. He just takes too long to power up his move. There we go. How do I turn down this sound? Way too much. I think we can beat him. Oh my god. He's level 28, we're level 13. I mean, to be fair, if he hits us a few times, it's gonna hurt and it's gonna hurt bad. But... We might be able to, ooh. I think we need to abort this mission real quick. Oh my god. No! Run, run. We have a few more seconds. I don't think we're gonna make it. If he ends up attacking us, just... Oh my god, oh my god, oh my god, oh my god, oh my god. I'm gonna use... That was so intense. Alright, that's good. One second. Okay. Had to answer back message. Real quick, it takes two seconds. Ooh, 5, 5, 10. Pinky, honey. Let's see if we can sell some stuff. Because we kinda really need to. And... Oh, I mean, hi. It's weird hearing his voice. I like it. Okay, let's sell this. That's pretty much all we can really sell. And let's go see... Oh, we can go through here. I did not know that. We're, see, he's somewhere up here. There he is, Isaac. Hey, Isaac. Thank you, Isaac. He seems like a sweet man. Oh, we're going the wrong way. We wanna go right over here. My bad. Let's go see Ma- Mayor Gale for a quick minute. I feel like we should also like friend up Ginger eventually. Oh, wait, what does Arlo like? Oh, Gale, where's Gale? It is a Sunday. He's probably like at home having dinner with Ginger and all them. Let's look up. My Time at Portia, Arlo, and see what he's into and stuff. Because maybe, and I mean just maybe, he might be a little easy. He might be hard to like befriend too though. Think we should probably upgrade our area if we have enough money. I think it'd be best to. Oh, I was supposed to look. I just sold it. And I didn't look at if it was high market or low market. We might have just been ripped off for that. You guys let me know. Um, I'm just pulling up the Arlo thing right now. Let's see. He likes... Oh, wait. No, it was right there. Okay. Oh, he has a lot of speech. Oh my. Uh, he likes the iron sword. He likes soldier with lance, armed stretcher bronze sword, rocket, seafood medley, waist pack, power lamp, roses. Thank god it's 10. Rubies. Okay, so he's gonna be a little hard. Topaz is four. I mean, okay, it seems a little easy, but not like too, too much. Let's cut down some of these trees. We're definitely gonna have enough now. So that's another skiver. If we can just... So let's go deliver that skiver and then we're gonna come back and make a few more things. We have to make, um, cook quite a lot. We're gonna make some more furnace kind of things. I think it would be the smartest to do that. That way, we can kind of, you know, um, make more materials at one time. And we need a lot, and I mean like a lot of materials, so. Am I just going straight in? Okay. Maybe it's going to Antoine or something. Oh, it is. Okay.
Hey!
Here. That was fast. What an efficient builder. I swear he says this sometimes, so, ooh, let's... Ooh, let's, yeah, we can inspect this. Here we go. That's broken. Oh, um, that. I know we get like rewards and stuff from this because I've obviously done it already before, right? So... So like down here? Yeah, it is. Okay. I mean, it's something to do that gives us some money. I feel like, yeah, okay. I was a little worried about that one. I couldn't really tell. Okay, that is just messed up. This looks messed up. I didn't hit the slot perfectly. My bad. Okay. Let's go check... Is it Paulies or whatever? Oh, we want the place beside Paulies. The like, the tool place, the tool place, yes. And see what we can do. Pinky! Our little beautiful kitty. Okay. Well, we can actually just check here instead of going all the way there. Why don't we just... Oh, it is up. So that was a great day. And I mean a great day for us to actually sell that stuff. Like... Mm-hmm, really good day. But... Ooh, sorry. But it wasn't a good day to buy an upgrade kit, so. Yeah, let's make some more bronze. And how many CDs do we have? Data discs, I mean. Gotta check that out and see if we have anything good. Can I just get in there? Thanks. I need some data discs. Do we even have any? We have to have some, right? We don't, do we? Oh, rip. Okay, we, I have like 117 in my other save. It's... You get it pretty often, honestly, like... Oh, these don't just go anywhere though, do they? Okay, hold on. Okay, there we go. That kind of goes there. That can go in there. That goes there. No idea where I have this one. Huh, quite a lot of stuff. Okay. Let's get those, whatever they're called, working. We have a silver cutter. We should have everything now. But we do want another stone furnace. And it takes wood and a stone tool. Okay, so let's just get ready for a whole bunch of these. Um, let's make three stone stools. And grab our wood. We can go get some more, so it's not that big of an, we're gonna need a lot of wood. Like, a lot of wood. So... Just gonna leave like one because I don't know how much it's gonna take for us to do this. And just kind of flop these down and really get some of the stuff going. There's one. Let's get another furnace. Just make three, so we have total four. I mean, it's not the greatest furnace, but it's better than nothing for now. I know we get better ones. So, which is quite useful actually. There. I do wanna almost put them like over here. So let's see. Definitely gonna have to go mining. Wow, okay. Which is fine. It just kind of sucks. And let's move this one over here. I don't think it's even doing, ah, it's doing something right now. Let's move it over here. Okay, so basically, we're gonna get lots of bronze going. And then we'll get copper. Yeah, ah, fuel depleted. Yeah, we're really gonna need more wood. Copper. And let's get some stone and glass because we're eventually gonna need glass, obviously, hence why it's there. Glass. And let's get some stone right here. There we go. And let's go cut down some stuff. Maybe break some rocks if we can too. Oh gosh, there's so much for us to do. It's not even funny. Oh, hold on. Let's just... We're gonna sell this. We need to make our inventory bigger like now too. Like, and I mean now. Okay, we don't have very much marble. Don't have very much wood. That's not good. The fiber is okay. We gotta pick up more poo, honestly. We need to pick up more poo. Um, yeah, we just need to keep everything kind of organized. 16 napos, that's not bad. But we're still... Fertilizer too eventually. Yeah, where's we at? Our fishing rod. Where did that go? We did make a fishing rod, didn't we? Yeah, it's right here. But we do not have any bait, I don't think. Hold on. Hold on a second. Just kind of keep some of our crop things in one area. Okay. It is the 21st, so... Maybe we can make some more like little planter boxes. Oh, we can't. Wooden boards. That is 100% fine. And these are probably still not done, right? Nope. Okay, let's mash some rocks. I got seven stamina left, so I think it was worth it kind of actually. Just sitting on a tree for a bit. I love running through this pond. Oh, look, Gale's there. I'm surprised Ginger's not, because it is nighttime. We got 20 seconds on the clock. Let's see if he says anything. He may, he may not. Oh, but yeah, we were looking for him earlier. Let's give him, oh, we put it away already, didn't we? Yeah, we did. Do you want some royal? Do you want this? What if he hates it? I think he's gonna hate it. You know what? Relationship plus one, I'll take. There we go. Oh, gosh, okay. I am stretching. Just taking a breather. Yelling, ah.
I have several items that I want to discuss today. The first is that thanks to the efforts of our builder, we now have a bridge to Amber Island. I would advise people not to go into the cave just yet, as there are some unruly creatures inside. I plan on opening up the cave as a tourist attraction eventually.
Okay.
In other news, we are aware of some thefts this week. These ashes will not be tolerated in our town. We will investigate this to the end and capture the perpetrator.
Mm-hmm.
Must be Huss and Tuss again.
These idiots never give up.
They stole my favorite book!
Oh, I don't care.
And my wheel of cheese!
I care about her though.
And one of my socks.
One sock.
I hear you, I hear you. Let's get to the bottom of this as soon as possible. Arlo will be spearheading this investigation, so you folks can rest assured. That's all for this time. You all have a good night.
Come get some pumpkin pie if you want. I do want, I do really want, thanks.
Here you go. Enjoy.
Thank you. And good day. Okay, so we're gonna go back, put our stuff away, and I think we'll be at the end of this episode. I think, well, hmm, you know what? We'll do one more day because I think every day is 15 minutes. So, two 15-minute days would be 30 minutes, right? So, I can do a 30-minute episode. I will double-check to make sure that it's within that amount of time and it's not like over, you know? But I don't wanna make these videos too, too long. I do like some clothes. Maybe we'll go get some, her something nice first. Okay. So we need one of these for Gale. Just keep that there. And also just keep that in there. Ooh, pumpkin pie goes there. I'm just gonna put the seeds. Ooh, let's keep two just in case. Might need to. Possibly. We'll see though. Um... Yeah, I don't pick that outfit very much. Oh yeah, fish. How many she likes? Or Pinky, I think Pinky's a girl. She likes legendary fish. So, okay, I think we're, we're set. We have some fertilizer also still left over. Have to figure out how to make our own fertilizer. That would be good. Good indeed. Okay. Can probably literally just come over here, see what's going on, and gather this items. Seems like we're all ready. And these should be ready to harvest. Oh, so close. Okay. Let's see. What do we got? Oh, we got a whole bunch. Commons Guild. Keep, obviously. Thank you for exemplary effort in discovering product issues on yesterday's inspection. You truly have the skill of a top-tier builder. Here's a little something for your time. Thank you. Antoine. Hey, I got news for you. Now that your workshop has achieved a slow AC ranking, you're qualified to inspect. Well, we did that yesterday, so, yeah, thanks. Come to see me sometime. I have a commission lined up for you. Okay, I'm just Gale, I'm assuming? We've completed, we completed the research and then, oh, industrial cutter. Okay, thank you. Awesome. Oh my god, there's so many noises going on in my house right now. Okay, Pinky! Got you a gift. Yo, 21? What did I give? Oh my god. What, what, what fish was that? Hold on. That was like the best fish I think I've ever given Pinky ever, and I mean like ever, ever. I was, oh, I mean, we just started to love Pinky, so probably far. I mean, far, yeah. What was that? Oh, that thing. An emperor gladiator fish. Yeah, where do I find that? I'll find it one day, but... There's Gale. Hey, I got something for you.
Thanks for coming. I've been real busy lately trying to figure out who the town thief is.
I heard about that.
We've never seen anything like it. It's so strange. He's not stealing anything essential, just random trinkets. The fools Huss and Tuss show up once in a while, but they're more interested in big mummy items. We'll capture him for sure. We're kind folks here, but we'll still uphold our laws. Anyway, enough about the thief. I asked you to come because I want to further develop the cave on Amber Island. That cave used to lead to a ruin, but due to an accident, the entrance was closed. This was some 40 years ago. Since then, there's been various rumors of it being haunted. Oh, which is all nonsense. I think it's about time we used it in our favor. The Haunted Cave of Portia has a nice ring to it, doesn't it? There used to be a power generator in there somewhere. I'm commissioning you to fix it up and give it some juice. Arlo tells me we'll need to install a removable battery, so go do that. Then I'll get one of the Hulu brothers to get that place running. Ah, this will be a fine tourist attraction.
To be honest, business smarts are right there. Business smarts all the way right there.
I hope the thieves turn out to be the Bandit Brothers. They're easy to solve.
Okay, and let's give this...
A present? Thank you!
You're welcome, Gale. Any day. Oh, look, Higgins. And we still need just in time to beat Higgins. Oomt, 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 oomt. Hell no. We're first. We are first, buddy, we are first. Let's try to get like one of the best, um, commerce missions. Run, oh my god, run. Let's go sees. Dark coffee table, what's this? Hardwood sofa. I don't even know if we can make half these. Two copper plates. Two copper blades. Two copper plates. I just don't know what we can and can't make, which we probably should check out what we need to upgrade our worktable actually. Because I know we need to upgrade quite a lot of our things actually. They don't let you know until like the mission and it's like kind of like a scramble for hell. So... Let's look and see if we can start getting the materials. Um, we're capable first. Upgrade. Old parts should be easy. We need 20 wooden bars. Okay, that sounds actually quite easy, and I think we should be able to accomplish that. Pretty decently easy. Awesome. Okay, before we go into the mines, let's just check to see if the prices are up or down. If it's down, I think we should go, um, check out the clothing store. So we're not wearing this. Oh, they're up. They're up a lot. Oh my, okay. What is the... Hold on. Fish for dinner. Oh, yeah. What can we get you? Ah, should probably go get that now. Probably want something good or something boring, we'll see. See if there's even anything good. I don't know if we should go to the... I don't know what mine we should go to. I think we should go to the other mine though.
Hey! Even though we live right by the sea, I haven't eaten any fish in weeks. Every day I have to look after my shop, so I can't go fishing. Can you bring me some?
We, sir. I was supposed to say madam. Okay, I guess, yeah, we could probably go to the other cave. Okay, I guess, yeah, we could probably go to the other cave. Meaning it wouldn't hurt... In my opinion, to go to this one. And just kinda see it out. And get the new materials, there's gonna be like lots of collectibles too though, so... It's gonna be okay, we kinda suck as well, so... But there's some interesting things in the mines, so, plus you're gonna wanna see me getting that stuff. Ooh, this is gonna come with mission. Maybe Petra would be interested in this, I should show it to her. It's like a cheap toy thing. Uh, I don't think there's anything in this area. There are like these purple orbs that you can get, okay? Eventually we'll come across it. Those are these purple orb things that you can come across and you wanna follow, and they bring you to like this weird ship looking piece and you go into it and like... Ooh, god, it's such, it gives you some stuff. No space in our inventory. Yeah, shoot, it's all not coming. Lots of pieces of collectibles. Awesome. Oh, come on, there we go, power lamp, piece three. Anything up here though? Oui, oh my gosh, okay, it's, I, I'm just a little overwhelmed by how much good stuff we're finding right now. It's quite rare that we run into like this deep of a mine that like is a little overwhelming. You've spent, you know, your 300, which, this one's expensive. You 300 goals for a whole week of it, meaning you wanna do that mining, you really wanna not like waste your time either mining. So it can get a little annoying, but because so many things happen... On screen, you know? Um... I don't know, like every day something happens and I don't wanna just go mining and then something happened, I'm like, oh crap, I have to restart my game now, like... You know, something happened and like... And like, start recording, like I might not be in the mood to record at that moment, so... It does get a little annoying, but... Oh yeah, we have, um... Skill, what is it? It's like we wanna run fast. Max endurance, yes. Can we like keep doing that? Will like make us run faster for longer, basically, this should be almost done, huh? This one is, there we go, harvest. What about this? Close. Ooh, let's, um... Get this done quickly. A little... Okay. Whew, we have so much going on over here now, okay. Let's just, you know... Get this going, even more. Uh-huh. Let's maybe keep some of this stuff with some of this stuff. And... I know there was like a piece of that somewhere, old talker piece, piece. Oh yeah, it's over here. Again, we just kinda wanna keep them... Together. Um, I doubt we're gonna find... What is this, I don't know. What is this, owl clock? It's a three piece set, so, it's not that bad. Kinda keep that kinda... That's also a piece of something, but we do have this. And that's a piece of something, this is a piece of something, geez. We're gonna need... Some more space, I think. Yeah. I think we do need like a lot more space. Let's get some of these. And their... Pieces and all. Oh, I hate to like... I hate that, yeah, okay. Kinda need that space, I can put like this weird stuff here probably. Oh yeah, those are like the scepters and stuff, which is odd. Oh, we still wanna bring that Petra, okay. Oh ouch. We're gonna put these weird scepters, probably here, right? And then we want our main, and we want this one. For these. I think we're doing a good job. Yeah. And some lettuce, okay! Look at that, and now we just gotta quickly collect everything. Which is annoying. Let's make one. Confirmed that. We need a lot more of those boards, Madalins, a lot more. Okay. I wanna make sure we get like a lot of this done over the nighttime. We fuel. And then, yeah, as much bronze bars as we can. Make sure the copper bars are going all night too, just cause... These are probably the most important we need, in my opinion. Keep the glass going just in case though, and we're still gonna get everything going, but... The bronze and stuff are the most important on top of, uh, the bricks are kinda important too. What is it that we needed for the worktable? I'm gonna look that up before I start the next episode, I think. Just so we're aware of what we need, kinda thing, shall we, Toby? Okay, we're gonna be on episode right here, if you guys like this video, please give it a big thumbs up and do not forget to subscribe to the channel if you guys are new here. Please don't be shy, I'll see you guys next time.